To the April 10th School Committee Meeting. Just want to remind everyone these meetings are taped and then broadcast on cable. So if you want to catch this later on or whatever, I'm sure we can find a listing for you. We want to start this meeting by getting an approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 13th and the FY 20 meeting of March 13th. Can someone make a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the March 13th, 2019, regular meeting minutes.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just the first one.
We have a motion for the FY 20 meeting.
Oh, for the budget meeting?
Yep.
I'll make a motion for the FY 20 meeting, March 13th, 2019.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, start with student recognition awards. Mr. McHale, Professor Edwards, please.
The great team has chosen Jasmine Vowles as Student of the Month for April. Jasmine's a wonderful student. Vowles puts 110% into all her work during classes. She's focused and participates often. Her work is always complete, on time, and with great detail and effort. Jasmine's a great team player, works well with others. She not only works hard academically, but is always willing to help out in the classroom, whether it is by helping a teacher or one of her peers. Jasmine's favorite subject is math and science. She's proud of the fifth grade Dan and grades drums. She wants to continue playing the drums in the middle school next year. Outside of school, Jasmine enjoys being active and playing sports. She plays club soccer, she plays softball, she's on the swim team, and enjoys riding a bike and being outside and, of course, along the beach. Great sense of humor, outstanding effort, and willingness to help others make her a fabulous selection for the April Student Month. Congratulations.
Hi, Jazzy. How are you? Can I ask Dad a question first? Drums?
She changed.
How did we end up with drums?
Don't know. She enjoys them though.
You have a setting home? That you practice on?
Not really.
No? Are you just learning?
Yeah.
Why did you pick drums?
Um...
Just because?
Yeah.
Yeah? You just thought it would be fun? Congratulations, you guys. You're welcome. Alright, so I know you're a good soccer player, and I know you're a good softball player. I know you ski, too. How's fifth grade going so far?
Good.
Yeah, we're almost done. Can we leave it? I couldn't believe it when I saw your name on my packet tonight, because I didn't think you were in the fifth grade. You're coming up here next year. Are you excited?
Cool.
Yeah, Autumn will be in the high school, so you guys won't be together, right?
Yeah.
Now, is that a good thing?
Yeah.
What's your favorite subject right now, hon?
I like math and science.
Math and science. That has nothing to do with the fact that Mrs. Conway is sitting over there, right?
No.
Nothing. Okay, very good. What are you looking forward to do this summer? It's coming quick.
Um...
Go to the beach? That's a good plan. I like that. Did you know that we only had like 30 full days of school left? Nobody's counting, though. Right? Congratulations, hon. Good job. Mr. Fornier.
Hello there. Nice. Very pleased today to present our middle school Student of the Month, Nicole DeDoin, grade six. I can't believe you're just in grade six. All the things you've been involved in since you started here are pretty amazing. You've been super involved. Great attitude, enthusiasm, always tries her best in every class. She played soccer, she played basketball, she's now running track. The story from the track coach was that they needed somebody to run the two-mile, and she had to leave early because she had probably another sports practice. So he just said, "Just jump in and run the two-mile." She ran the two-mile. Like, sixth grade, running against high school kids.
Nice.
One to watch, for sure. You've probably watched her play JV basketball, which was awesome and fun to watch. And she's obviously a natural-born soccer player as well. She's willing to do whatever's asked, on the track team, running, whenever the coach asks. She was in the recent production of Aladdin, which was a wonderful show, and she managed to fit that in with all of her other sports and homework and everything else. She's an active participant in class, very helpful to her teachers, just has really embraced her first year of middle school, which is something that we love to see. And she's got an older sister who's up at the high school, a younger brother, a super cute dog. Just a great kid. Congratulations.
Hi, Nicole.
Hi.
How you doing, hon?
Good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So all that running that Coach Angel makes you guys do on the soccer field really paid off at the track meet, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah? I know she likes to make you guys run, doesn't she? Yeah, it's good, though. I mean, you did very well up here this first year with sports and everything else, so sixth grade seems to be going pretty well. What's your favorite subject?
Um, probably math and science.
Math and science. What's your nickname for Mr. Walker? For Mr. Walker?
Jojo Bodine.
What is it?
Jojo Bodine.
Jojo Bodine, okay.
I don't like it.
You don't like it? It's almost over. It's coming quick, and then you will not have to do without anyone, right?
They'll be watching you for a couple of years, so they'll probably still...
Yeah, they will still call you that in the hall next year. Mr. Bodine is right. That's okay. But so far, middle school seems like it's going pretty well, and the coaching is fun. You guys had a good time. You guys worked hard, so that turned out really well. Anyone else have a question for Nicole? No? Do you play softball at the school? You play JV? No, you play for town?
Yeah.
No, no softball. I'm sorry, track. I'm sorry, basketball, soccer, track. Right. First track meet was last week?
Yeah.
Did you know they were four hours long when you signed up?
No.
Yeah.
Not ten minutes.
Yeah, and you run for, yeah, five, 10 minutes, right? And you're done? They're a lot of fun, right?
Yeah.
Well, good luck. You know what? I bet we'll see you back here. I have a feeling if you jumped in and won a two-mile against high school kids, that's pretty impressive. Good for you. Good job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, I'm very pleased to introduce our high school Student of the Month, grade nine student Sienna Postage. Sienna was nominated by all of her teachers up at the high school, especially though Mrs. Shiver, who says that she works hard every single day, in class and at home. She always does her work to perfection and hands in her best work. She never cuts corners, hands in anything that is not her best work. She goes beyond and above with taking notes. She's organized. She works hard doing her homework, sets a good example for others, and reports at home when she does chores, helps with her family, helps younger siblings with homework as well. She's really adjusted nicely to the high school, is a kind and respectful person always, and it's our hope that she continues to work hard and finishes her freshman year with the same effort. Keep up the great work. Good job.
Hi, Sienna. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So it sounds like you're working hard this year?
Yes.
Favorite class this year?
Science, math.
Science and math? All science and math, you girls! I like that! That's very good to hear. Science and math, so science is yours physics?
Yes.
Yes, and you're liking math?
Yeah, very much. I loved it.
Really? Did you enter a science project in the science fair this year?
No, I didn't.
Maybe something to look forward to for next year, perhaps? What kinds of things do you like to do outside of school?
Um, well, usually outside of school, I make the time to do things on YouTube and look at things like chemistry or trigonometry or calculus.
Really?
Yes.
Good for you. Any ideas that you want to kind of go into something in the science field that it's looking like, sounding like?
I'm thinking of being a chemist or technologist or scientist.
Good for you. Well, I'm sure that the people in the science department in high school can't wait to get their hands on you. Good job. Anybody have any questions for Sienna? Sienna, thank you very much. Congratulations. Alright, guys, for anyone who is here, I know that Kristen Payson is here from the newspaper. She would like to take photos of the kiddos for the paper. I know you guys would love to stay with us and go through the entire meeting, but at this point, if you'd like to step into the hallway, she'd be happy to do that with you. Thank you very much. Congratulations to our students.
Good job.
Great. Student Advisory Council, if you guys would like to both give your report, please.
So the baseball team won their first game last Monday against Golden Gate. The softball team won their first home game against Brockfield. I'm sorry, they lost against Brockfield 6-2. The girls tennis team had their, has their first match up at home against Gardner. This year, it's both middle school and high school girls playing together. The boys tennis team has their first, had their first match April 6th at Brockfield, and they have a smaller team with a new coach this season.
The track team had their first meet on Tuesday, and they did well. National Art Honor Society had Playtime to paint plans for their spring fundraiser, and the students created famous artist paintings at this Playtime. Interact is planning to go to a Rotary Dinner Party on May 10th, and they go to the Food Country at the Cherokee Center of Town, which I believe is on Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah.
It was one of those two days this week. Pursuiting council in March, 16 delegates attended the MASCE conference in Hyannis. There, we were awarded the Massachusetts Gold Council of Excellence Award, the highest award given. Just yesterday, the council was awarded the National Council of Excellence for the first time ever. It's a pretty big achievement.
For National Honor Society, they're gearing up for elections. They will be participating in the townwide cleanup on April 27, and they're hosting a senior luncheon on May 15. Triumph, they are preparing for their trip to New York City to attend a musical workshop and see Broadway, the Broadway show Dear Evan Hansen, and they're also having an open-mic night on April 24. Wellness Club, several members attended a Healthy Mind Summit where they listened to some impressive speakers. They networked with other schools to share ideas and bring back programming for West Boylston. And also for track, our first meet was against Maynard, and the track meet against Narragansett will be rescheduled to May 3.
So I just wanted to bring up one point that you guys at this table might be a little bit interested in, and I know these guys wouldn't have gone into that much detail. So the Maloney siblings, so Gavin is a pitcher for the baseball team, Kate is an eighth grader. She's pitching for varsity. So on Monday last week, Gavin struck out 12 batters, and on Tuesday, Kate struck out 13 as an eighth grader, and they did beat Brockfield 15-2, the girls varsity softball. So I did let their mother know that the two of them in two days struck out more batters than the entire Red Sox starting pitching rotation last week, so...
Fuck, you're fine.
Congratulations to the Maloney siblings and this...
I don't even remember when she was...
She was here, we were talking about it.
I asked her, I said, "Who's better?" I asked, "Who's better?", and she hadn't played though.
In fairness, after Gavin pitched and got the 12 strikeouts, he did say to her, "You can beat me tomorrow." So, I mean, what's better than that? So between the two of them, 25 strikeouts in two days, so congratulations to the Maloney siblings. Pretty darn impressive.
But I helped Gavin, and he won today, too.
He won today? Excellent. Good job. Alright, so just wanted to get that in there, because I think that's pretty awesome. Thank you to our camera crew, Christian. Thank you for coming and helping us. We appreciate it. And thank you to Mrs. Pratt for taking our minutes. We appreciate your help as well. And at this time, I want to see if Dr. Shuckert would like to invite our guests to...
I would love to. We do have a presentation tonight from the New England School Development Council. They have conducted a study on behalf of the school committee about the best educational use of our facilities here in West Boylston. We've been talking about this for quite a while. They conducted the study over the course of the beginning of the year, and they're here tonight to present their overview of their results and take any questions that you, the committee, might have about the report. So I'd like to welcome the members of the group to the table. We have John Kennedy, and you'll forgive me, I, Karen...
Karen.
Leduke. Yes.
As much as I want to return to my youth...
There we go.
Alright, well... Who's picking up?
Yes.
Okay, great, great. Well, we want to thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and present some of the information to you that we have come up with with this project. I would, first of all, like to compliment the school committee and administration for engaging in advanced planning and an advanced planning process. It's a make-sense choice before any major decisions get made in terms of facility utilization. So congratulations on engaging in the planning process. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the members of the administration and also the building principals for the assistance that they provided during the course of the study. We had tremendous, tremendous support, and they were very helpful to us. And also, within the community, the planning department provided us with demographic information, and we had local and regional realtors who also came forward and assisted us with an analysis of current trends in the real estate market. So that information was tremendously helpful as we moved forward, and I just wanted to make sure that people knew that we were very grateful for their help. So, in terms of the project, I will be, I was planning to be using the screen there. Now, do you all have that up on your...
We have it here.
Okay. That has been, we've made some adjustments to that since the beginning of the year. And it's important to understand, the adjustments that we have made have not resulted in any major changes with regard to enrollment projections or any of the options that we talked about. But we did want to give it an upgrade, and the district, once this is completed, will be receiving additional new copies of the project, so which will include the adjustments that we've made. Okay? So I don't know what's best, if you would prefer to be looking at the presentation as we go through.
Probably just a...
Definitely. Yeah, I think, alright, that would probably work. So, let's just... Okay? So first of all, let me just go back and mention that we have a project team that worked on this.
I just couldn't find a blank spot.
Okay. And so this is the project team that was involved in this, and we've already introduced, you know, Karen, myself, Donald Kennedy, no relation, is a, he always tells people that. I haven't figured out why that happens, but he is our enrollment specialist, and so he was very much involved in helping and assisting with the development of the enrollment projections for the district. He has also been involved in just consulting with regard to the outcomes that we develop. And Arthur Bencourt is our executive director. And just very briefly about NESTEC, it is the New England School Development Council, and it is a nonprofit organization. We operate out of Marlboro, Massachusetts currently. And this year, we have approximately 250 member districts throughout New England who are members of our organization, and we're very pleased with the fact that many, many of the districts have been with us as members for 10 years or more. And we look at that as an indicator that through our various services, we are providing satisfactory information and service to the districts that are the members. And then, in terms of services, we are involved in a number of projects for districts. We do executive searches, we do strategic planning. This year, we did over 280 sets of enrollment projections for districts throughout New England. And also, we do demographic analysis, which was involved in this project, and facility studies. So those are the kinds of things that we are typically involved with. Okay. Yep, okay. So, in order to get an indication in terms of what this project entailed, first of all, we have the introduction, and we entered into the agreement with the district, and the goal of the project was to provide a basis for decision-making with regard to future grade-level configurations, building renovations, or construction, or alternate facility use. That was the primary goal. Okay? And then, as we move to Slide 5, we, with regard to the enrollment trend analysis, we analyzed district information, municipal records, data provided by town officials, which I mentioned earlier, local and regional real estate sources, HUD, Housing and Urban Development, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts provided us with the birth information, and also, we received information from the U.S. Census Bureau. So all of that was utilized in the development of the trend analysis. We also, obviously, were involved in a review of the facilities, and Karen visited the Major Edwards Elementary School, and I visited the high school, and both visits took place while the buildings were in session. We think that's very important for us to see it while instruction is taking place. And we met with the administrators, and we also examined, you know, school goals and curriculum information and scheduling and so on. The study did not officially include a facility analysis with regard to the capital assessments. However, we did report in this report information that was gained in our discussions with the administrators with regard to capital assets and maintenance needs. And using the information that we gained, now this is the key piece, taking, A, the enrollment information and demographic information, which led to the updated enrollment projections, and then B, taking the information that we gained with regard to each facility's ability to meet programming needs. We developed a planned operating capacity for the two buildings, and also, we had the enrollments with the projections as to what they were going to be down the road. And those are two very important pieces. Important to note, with regard to the overall report, whoops. Okay. With regard to the overall report, the report is meant to be a starting point, and so when you see the options, they are designed to serve as a catalyst for further analysis and discussion. The document should not be considered as an end product, but really, a beginning product and to consider future possibilities. And we make it very, very, an important part of our study is to try to be sure that we have taken an objective approach with regard to each of the options, providing you with both advantages and challenges that we think are associated with the option. Okay? Alright. So, now with regard to the demographic analysis, we took a look at births. Our source for that is the Massachusetts Department of Health Vital Statistics, and you can see that births within the community over the past 16 years or so, 15 years, have remained fairly consistent. We have looked at also the preliminary provisional birth information from the state and Department of Health, and the births are still fairly consistent in the range that you see there. And so, and obviously, births are an important factor in any community, because those children born in the community this year, most of them, will have an impact on your school system for the next 17 years or 18 years. So it's a very important factor in helping to make some determinations as to what the future looks like. We also looked at HUD permit information, and with regard to that, you can see that there has been a downturn over time. If you look at the three numbers that are there, and the boom period, the permits were averaging about 34 per year, and then with the economic decline that occurred beginning in the 2008 through 2012 period, there was a significant decline in permits, and that makes sense. New homes are not constructed during an economic downturn. And also, you can see that currently, the permits, most recent average was approximately 12 permits per year. The 2018 figure was not available at this particular point, but it should be soon. Okay? We also took a look at, and contacted the planning department, and they were very helpful to us, and so we, you know, want to be sure that everybody understands that they did an excellent job for us, and the planning department provided us with information at that time indicating that in process, approved and under construction, there were 16 units, single families, of which eight had already been completed, and five were awaiting completion. And in the approval pipeline, there were eight units. And I have been back in touch, and that is still moving forward, but has not moved into final approval and construction as of yet. With regard to apartments, 80 had been approved and constructed, and they were 14 one-bedroom, 58 two-bedroom, and 8 three-bedroom. And that has been completed. What else is in the works? There are two duplexes in the approval pipeline, and one duplex has been approved and permitted and is going forward. We also took a look at, and contacted the planning department. And they were very helpful to us. And so, we, you know, want to be sure that everybody understands that they did an excellent job for us. And the planning department provided us with information at that time, indicating that in process, approved and under construction, there were 16 units, single families, of which eight had already been completed, and five were awaiting completion. And in the approval pipeline, there were eight units. And I have been back in touch, and that is still moving forward, but has not moved into final approval and construction as of yet. With regard to apartments, 80 had been approved and constructed. And they were 14 one-bedroom, 58 two-bedroom, and eight three-bedroom. And that has been completed. What else is in the works? There are two duplexes in the approval pipeline, and one duplex has been approved and permitted and is going forward. Okay? So that gives you the update in terms of the planning department and what might be coming into the community. We also asked them, and this is an important question, we asked them, are there any other factors that they were aware of that might either accelerate or impede residential construction? And the indicator that we received was that there were no new factors. And they did indicate that state-owned land was a major factor in the sense that it, you know, limited the amount of buildable land that is available in the community. And so, they said, that's a factor that has committed play. We also asked them, you know, in some communities, is there anything that's occurred with a regional or local employer, either coming or going, that can have an impact? Or was there anything that has occurred with regard to changes in commuter transport? And they indicated that there were no major factors that had committed play. Those are the three things typically that sometimes come into play in effect. Realtor input was very helpful. And we received information that indicated that within the community, sales volume was up versus the economic downturn. Days on the market, they indicated, had begun to increase slightly, but of course, this was in the fall into the winter. And so, that's the norm with regard to seasonal sales. They also noted that increased interest rates getting up above or around 4% versus the 3.5 did have some impact. And the other major factor, and we're seeing this in a lot of communities, is that sellers are, because prices have gone up, oftentimes sellers have been looking for even higher values on the homes, and sometimes that slows the sales slightly. They, the entry level tier was 250 to 280. However, they noted that there were very few of these. And then, the, they also noted that the second tier is about 280 to 350. That's the more common range in terms of sales. Millennials, larger than the boomer generation. And there are approximately 57 million of them in the country. However, they have been buying later than prior generations. They've had later marriages and fewer children. And many are renting instead of buying. And part of the issue there is high debt. They still do have high college debt in many instances, and that's a factor that has affected things. And lastly, the boomers. The boomers are looking, they're turning, they are turning 65 at the rate of 10,000 a day in the U.S. And that's going to continue for the next 11 years. Many of the boomers, and your Realtors confirm this as well, are beginning to look to downsize. When they downsize from a single-family, three- or four-bedroom home to either an apartment or a condo, who's most likely to buy that? All right? So, you know, as the boomers start to move to smaller residences, they are oftentimes big hitting. Okay? So, next, we go to the information on total home sales. And I'm not going to go through all of these with you. You can take a look at them. And you can see the numbers, the comparative numbers. And then, in terms of median prices, same thing. You can take a look at those. And this brings us to actually the end of the information on the demography. And so, you've seen some indicators that play a role in determining where the enrollments are likely to go. The next thing is the, take a look at the history. And you can see, if you look at the K through, if you look at the lower box to the right, and you take a look at the K through 12 numbers, over the course of past decade in West Boylston, the numbers have declined by 149 students total. Okay? That was the last decade. And where did that occur? It occurred at the high school level, decline of about 68 over a 10-year period. It occurred at grade six through 12, a decline of 115. So I'm looking at the box to the left now, the lower box, and you can see it in yellow, 100, the six through 12. And at K through five, numbers were fairly consistent at about 37, but there was a 37 student decline. Okay? Next, we move to the projected enrollment. And we are indicating that the decline will continue, but the decline will be approximately, again, look to that box to the far right, lower area, six through 12, the decline will be approximately, we're projecting, 48 students. So it's a decline that is approximately 100 students less than what the district experienced in the last decade. And where will the decline be occurring? It will be occurring in six through 12, anticipating about a 51-student decline there. However, if you take a look at the elementary grades, the projection is that there will actually be an increase of approximately three students over the course of the decade. Okay? In numbers. And so, these are updated projections based on information that we gained. So at this point, we, covering the demographic piece, we are going to move into the capacity analysis.
Can I just interrupt you, girl?
Yeah.
I know this is a fairly large report, and unfortunately, I don't think we can go through it slide by slide. So because we are kind of that, a little bit of a time constraint with this presentation, if you could just maybe give us an overall summary with the last, I know that I was reading through recommendations and what possible, possibilities would kind of work in West Boylston. I just, I don't think it's realistic to go through the slide by slide at this particular meeting anyway.
Okay.
So if we could maybe summarize the next few sections with a little less minute detail, that would be helpful for the committee.
Sure. All right. And actually, the capacity analysis piece is one where we do that. We're going to be moving through that relatively quickly with the two schools and just giving you a few highlights. I'm going to pass that.
I think it's important for you to just understand how we calculate that capacity. And the current operating capacity is based on what we look at as classrooms, so the students are in classrooms. Architecture square footage, NESDEC uses classroom spaces. So we're going to look at the number of classrooms. We also looked at West Boylston's class sizes, which is at the top, which is how we calculate that. And it's for future planning and to accommodate for future growth. So I want to use Major Edwards as an example of how we calculate that. I think it's important to say, probably, that it was built in 1934, 35. We know all those things. The addition, and then the renovation. But here is how we calculate the current operating capacity. You look at the classrooms, multiply by the class size number, and that adds up to 513. And you can see there's 16 grades, 1 to 5, specialized classroom. And the same thing happens for the planned operating capacity. As we review each school, we look at what are some of the things that might cause us to think about changing that. There could be deficiencies in the school where teachers don't have their own classroom or their storage. But that's not the case for Major Edwards. Just quickly, we looked at instructional spaces. We looked at core facilities. We look to make sure that the administrative staff has the space they need to do their work. We looked at the support staff. Those are important components of the school, and to make sure that they have adequate space to do the work for your students. We looked at instructional administrative technology, ADA compliance, and then it's, when you get to, excuse me, the site, it's this one, the major systems and maintenance. It's important for you to spend some time looking at these because you know, as well as we do after reviewing, there are some issues with the heating at Major Edwards. This is steam versus the hot water. There's some flooring issues. So I asked you to look at those and see what those major systems are. And then, the site information. We haven't been to a district where the property is perfect, but I think it's important to look here, to see that the areas we drop off and pick out, proximity to traffic. And that storage is housed all over the school, but you can always use some additional assistance. And then, the same thing for West Boylston Middle and High School is the same way, but we calculate the planned operating capacity differently here. So John, did you just explain that, and then we'll go quickly through those slides to get to the options.
Yeah. I'm referring to Slide 34. And with regard to that, with the middle school, high school, the calculation is done differently because of programming situations. And what we find, and I think this will make sense to all of you, at the high school level and middle school level as well, the district, in order to be competitive, has to expand programming and provide it in the form of electives and other course choices for students. And when that takes place, we find that oftentimes such things as AP classes, foreign language classes, and other specialized courses, in order for students to be able to choose them and take them, many times, they are not offered at the full capacity. For example, AP physics, or Level 4 French, or Spanish, or so on. And so, in order for a high school to be competitive, it must be able to offer programming at numbers which are lower than the 25 or so that is the typical max number. And so, oftentimes, and this is true everywhere we go, you'll see class sizes with the electives and with some other areas in the 15 or 14 level because they have to be able to provide these for the special interests and coursework for the students. Okay? Does that make sense to everybody? And so, as a result of that, what we did was, we take, if you take a look at this, we take a look at the total number of student spaces, that's in the right-hand column there, and we total that, all right, for each, and so, in other words, 23 classrooms times 25, and so on and so forth. And then, we came up with a number of 1,005. And what we use in order to get the current operating capacity is a .75 factor. And that .75 factor takes into consideration the fact that many classes are not going to be operating at the full maximum. Okay? And so, the school can continue to offer its very strong program. And then, we took one classroom offline for conference office and storage space, which were shortages that you will see noted as you go through the high school. And then, so therefore, it becomes 980 times .75, and the total middle school, high school is 735 capacity, planned operating capacity. Okay? Now, going through the rest of this, you're going to see highlighted or listed the various factors, instructional spaces, central office, core facilities, administrative spaces, and so on. And with those, if there are needs or inadequacies, they have been noted. Okay? So you can go through and you can see them. And so, once we have completed both the facility information and the demographic and enrollment information, we reach the point of moving to the options.
Then again, these are a catalyst to be, it's not an item, it's something to start your conversations. So the, we actually brought, we're showing you an option that we did not bring forward, which was to close the elementary school and to reconfigure the middle high school's pre-K to 12 building. There isn't enough capacity to do that. And we actually, so we did not bring that option forward. But I want you to understand that we had considered it. The next one is to reconfigure the elementary to pre-K to 3, and move grades 4 to 5 to the middle high school. Reconfiguring some middle high school space to accommodate grades 4 and 5. So you can see the grade level alignment has changed from what is currently in place. You can see from the next chart, we have looked at the projected enrollment for pre-K to 3. Here it is. The planned operating capacity, as I stated before, was 513. There's the enrollment difference. So there is enough room at Major Edwards to house pre-K to 3. You know that because it already houses pre-K to 5. And it maintains this 10% capacity cushion, which is important to do because that allows you to, for expansion, or if there's an increase in enrollments. So we know that pre-K to 3 will fit at Major Edwards. With the caveat that that's an 18-year-old building in some places. At grades 4 through 12 at West Boylston Middle High School, you can see, we projected the enrollment for grades 4 through 12 over the next 10 years, using the numbers John had mentioned in the chart. You can see that the projected enrollment difference is well within the range, and that we maintain that 10% capacity cushion should there be any increase in enrollment here. So this is a viable option. What are some of the advantages? There's sufficient capacity for both schools, and the potential utilization of Major Edwards from municipal or civic organizations for those vacated spaces. What are some of the challenges associated with that? Again, continued education of students where a 18-year-old building, that there has to be advanced planning for the realignment and accommodation of students at the middle of high school. And to make sure that those programming is true to the fourth and fifth grade model. Also, to make sure that there's sufficient space for the IRBs and PE and other specialized areas. Consideration of maybe the start times and scheduling for students in grades 4 through 5 versus grades 6 through 12. What's the transportation look like? Those types of things. So some of the, these are some of the challenges. Should they need additional space, we can reconfigure some of them to look, you know, to shift the enrollment numbers in order to get more space. So that's Option 1A. 1B, reconfigure elementary to pre-K to 3, which you see, move 4 to 5 to the middle high school, but construct new spaces for grades 4 to 5 at the middle high school. So you can see, we have an addition of six classrooms in order to accommodate 4 to 5, in addition to some of the spaces that are currently available here at the middle high school. So here, we can see grades 4 through 12 at West Boylston Middle School, but we increased the planned operating capacity to 905 because we added those six classrooms. 150 is added. You can see there's still clearly enough space in order to accommodate grades 4 through 12 with those six new spaces. One of the advantages, students would have access to a new construction grades 4 and 5. And these are some of the same advantages that we noted for the previous. In addition, there is a cost associated with those additional classrooms that needs to be ceded. The process timeline, the project approval and construction, we noted, maybe five to seven years. And we need to make sure the middle of high school can accommodate those additional structural and the site can accommodate those classrooms. Advanced planning always. Whenever you shift grade levels, you need to think about what the educators are doing, what the students are doing, how it's communicated to the families, all of those things. And there's increased expectations. Option 2A is to close Major Edwards Elementary School, move grades 4 to 5 to the middle high school, and construct a new pre-K to 3 elementary school building. You're going to see a similarity between Option 2A and Option 2B. 2A is just building a pre-K to 3. And the reason why I'm suggesting that is it costs could be less. You can see again, 4 to 12 beats the criteria for planned operating capacity, and keeps the cushion, and also that the advantage is they have access to new facility. But the middle school does have adequate. But the middle school does have adequate capacity to boost them. And the process timeline, the site can accommodate. There are other factors that are similar to what you saw in 1B. You can see those challenges for 2A. This is 2B. Close the elementary school and construct a new pre-K to 5 school. It's similar to construct a new pre-K to 3 school. Going for the 21st century, the cost, the site, all of those things need to be considered. And then option 3, I'm going to have John actually go over this one.
Okay. And option 3 is to close the current elementary school and move pre-K to 5 to this building, the middle high school, and construct a new middle high school. And so the grade levels would be pre-K through 5 at this building and then 6 through 12 at the newly constructed middle high school. And then based on the, if you take a look at the, this slide, based on the planned operating capacity versus the projected enrollment, you can see that there is excessive or certainly excessive capacity and definitely there is a 10% capacity cushion with this. Advantages, obviously, a new high school would afford students and staff, would be designed to, fully designed to be 21st century programming and utilization. And there is, there would be adequate capacity for pre-K through 5 in this building. There would be a potential to utilize the vacated Major Edwards Elementary for municipal and civic organizations or collaborative programming. And there would also, the excess capacity at this building could be utilized for some at least of the collaborative and organizational programs if needed. Okay? The challenges, obviously, the cost of pre-K students at the, accommodating them here, pre-K and K students, restrooms, things along those lines would have to be adjusted and play spaces and so on. And obviously, the cost of construction of a new high school. The other piece, as was mentioned just with the earlier project, anything that's going to go through the state for funding is typically going to be taking a five to seven year period of time to, and that's maybe even a conservative estimate at this point. And then you can see, need to assure that a site can accommodate the, within the community, the new middle school, high school. And so you can see the rest of them, and they are fairly similar to what we have mentioned previously. Option 4 would be to close the elementary school, move pre-K through 5 elementary school students to the middle school, high school, constructing a new high school. And so in this particular case, the, so this would move on through, but the new high school as opposed to being a 6 through 12 would be, in this particular case, a 9 through 12 facility. All right? And that would be a possibility, obviously, that would have some savings involved in it. You can see the capacity analysis situation. Pre-K through 8 at this particular building would have a, would have excess capacity. However, it would be starting to get a little bit tight with regard to the 10% capacity cushion. And then the advantages, a new would be very similar. 9 through 12 would be, they would have access to a 21st century building. There would be potential utilization of the vacated Major Edwards building by municipal and civic organizations. Okay? Yeah, they're pretty much the same. Okay? The challenges, the extra cost would be somewhat less, but it's still going to be a major cost. Okay? And so they are pretty much the same. And you can see the challenges continued. And so those are the primary options that we have examined, and we made every attempt to be as objective as possible in taking a look at them as we move from district to district. Obviously, the desires and the needs that are presented by members of the district vary. And so there are lots of choices, but remember, these, this is just the beginning.
One thing, just for clarification, I don't know the relevance, but just for accuracy's sake, the two end wings in this was built in the 90s, not in the 70s. I don't know exactly. It said 77 on the slides, but I think it was probably 96, 97, 99.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I have one other question. Did you, I know when we first met, you talked about a certain land in the town. Did you look at potential area for where a building would go?
No. No. That, that was not something that we would be able to, to do.
Is that next step the further, do you think this is, there is anything that this place is, 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 you realize that state owned land, you recognize that?
It'd be nice to put a school on some of that stuff.
I do just want to say a word of thanks. This was a very wonderful organization to work with. Their work was very professional and minimally invasive for such a deep report. And I just want to express my gratitude for that. It was really interesting.
Well, this was, we've been to a lot of communities, and I'll tell you, and as I mentioned early on, tremendously positive expressions came from everybody that we dealt with. They're very, very committed to making sure that this is and continues to be an excellent system. We were, we were just very, very impressed.
Thank you.
So we'll be getting updated PDA. We will be getting an updated, and also we'll be putting out the agreement calls for us to also put out updated hiring copies. And so we'll be doing that as well. Now that, move to the next.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
May I ask, I just put on the agenda, I was going to ask if you would make a motion just to refer this study to the building and capital plan, subcommittee for their consideration. Do you want to make that motion, please?
I have a motion to refer the best education use facilities to the building and capital planning subcommittee for further review.
Any discussion, questions?
Excuse me, before we leave, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but Beth knows that if there are any further questions that arise, feel free to get in touch and we'll respond as quickly as we can. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Warrants, could I have motion on the two warrants, please?
Make a motion for approval of the payroll warrant dated April 1st, 2019.
Do the second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And motion for the second warrant, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll warrant dated April 22, 19, before, before 5, 19. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Subcommittee reports, legislative subcommittee, does that have a report to share?
Essentially, it's more of an invitation to be day on the hill, Wednesday, May 1st, if anybody is interested in going. Registered.
Were you, man, you could go, because I know that's a half day. I didn't know if you were involved.
If somebody wants to go, I'll go with them.
Okay. We can discuss that at some point. I know that's a half day here, I just didn't know if you were involved in the, um...
She actually does.
I know.
Hey. We can talk about that then. And budget capital plan?
Well, there's two things actually, that one of them is a motion we need on the budget. But the other thing is that we met with FinCom last Wednesday, was it last Wednesday? It was last Thursday. And had a very productive meeting with them, reviewing our budget and also some of the capital needs expenses that we have coming up. So it was a good meeting down at the town hall with the three of us and the one wall. Yeah, we didn't get, we didn't see that anymore. We did invite them to this presentation.
Okay.
Want to do a motion? Sure. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the FYI 20 budget as presented with the town appropriation of $12,403,969 and a total school budget of $13,325,033.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Negotiations, Mr. Morrison, do you want to give a report?
Sure. Included in the packet is the agreement between the teachers association and the school committee that was presented in the MOA, was that February? So Dr. Sharper has worked with the association to include the agreed upon MOA into the bargaining agreement as presented here. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement as submitted in the packet.
Do we need a specific date in motion?
Okay. As presented, it says.
Can I have a second there, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's available to be signed tonight, too. Does somebody have it? Mrs. Brown?
Uh, me.
If you would just sign that before you leave, the members of the association have already signed.
Absolutely.
Just, just bring it.
No, it's everybody.
It's everybody.
That's the full, like, bargaining agreement.
Can I ask also, if I know they're all, they were sent in our packet electronically, could we have individual ones, the email to us or PDA?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
So the other item on the agenda is the memorandum agreement with the school committee and the paraprofessionals. I think what I'd like to do is ask Dr. Sharper if she could summarize some changes there.
Okay. Let me just get into that. Yes. So this was regularly bargained contract. The first article that we will amend is the salaries related to covering as a substitute teacher. The prior contract had paraprofessionals getting $30 a day extra to do that. It will be 40 per this contract. We changed the language on sick leave. The prior contract required that a doctor's certificate be given to us if they had absences exceeding five days. We changed that to be in line with the Massachusetts state law, which cites three consecutive days. We also amended the article on personal days, and we now will allow paraprofessionals to carry over a personal day from one year into the next. This is the same language that's in the teacher's contract currently, so that they can have three personal days if they have an extra one from the year before, not to exceed three days in a year. We have, in the paraprofessionals contract that was previously in place, we could dismiss a paraprofessional after one year if their service was not acceptable. We've extended that now to three years, which is the same amount of time we have to determine a teacher's longevity in the district also. So that's, and the last part before salaries is a wonderful piece, I think, and that is that we have provisioned to set aside $10,000 a year for paraprofessionals in the district to take courses in an approved educator preparation program if they would like to, you know, become a teacher or increase their skills in education. We're really pleased with that as a bargaining piece. The last part is the salaries, and as all of our units so far have accepted, the salary increases over the next three years will be 2% each year.
And the $10,000, is that limited? Like, so for example, a teacher comes in and all of a sudden wants to do four courses and gets $4,000?
Yeah, we don't do it that way. So we usually do one at a time for people.
Okay, so you get one per year.
Yeah.
You don't get, is that what you spread out?
Usually one. Sometimes somebody might get two if nobody else has taken one, but usually it does go. People do want that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the wealth is being spread.
It's spread. I haven't had a complaint about that yet. We haven't had it for paraprofessionals, so let's see how it goes.
The beneficial part to that for the school department truly is, I mean, the strictures around that is for a teacher education program. So what that does, that helps create a feeder, a pool for new teachers in our district as well. So now, now once we've identified folks that are interested in our district and show that potential to want to become teachers, that gives us a nice pipeline to recruit and retain our teachers as well. So I really appreciate the positive changes in that agreement. There's several things that make Dr. Sharper's job a little bit easier in terms of assessment and flexibility management as well. So I think it's a really favorable agreement. As a matter of fact, I would. Sorry about that.
No, you go right ahead.
So I'd like to make a motion to vote to accept the memorandum agreement between the West Boylston School Committee and the West Boylston Paraprofessionals. And most, I mean, we seem collectively in favor.
Wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're in. Communication and reports, Mrs. Ramon, would you like to go first?
Two of MPS is underway, Day 5 finishing up very early. Testing today, grade 4 was last week. As always, I'd like to thank, because you come up, financial thank yous and their assistance. Coordinating the tech piece and also organizing the groups, et cetera. It's been a pretty smooth process thus far. We've been most efficient with the technology piece with all of this year. It already appears in software, which has been helpful. Kids have worked incredibly hard and staff has been flexible along the way with our bookings and our space limitations as the work downstairs with the labor damage continues. The new set of tiles was filed last week after they stripped out the top layer. There was a layer underneath that they had not planned upon. So I did ask, I spoke to the supervisor at Circle a couple times over the last two days. I asked them to not work for the remainder of this week because we do really need to utilize that art room, which is sold. utilize that art room, which is the soul room, functioning downstairs, four stables before NCAS, it's a library as we use, so it's very tight. So a wall, beginning of his last name, was, you know, earth block. So he assured us that we'd be on site on Monday, next Monday, and the anticipation of finishing up on Wednesday, 24th.
Any issue with anything, tiles with respect to needing to eradicate or annul anything?
No, that was, that was the delay. They came in Thursday, ran the tests, and were yesterday, and they, they came back negative. So then they were going to commence work from there, so. But with the end of the week and a couple of days of testing, they can stay clear and start Monday over vacation week. And I'd like to thank Stephanie Rocher and our fill-in for Art, as we have, we, we, I just talked to yesterday, will be returning next year, but Leah's done an, Stephanie's done an annual job filling in, and she's hosting an art fair next Thursday night in the gym collaboration with the PDA.
Nice. I won't tell Mrs. Roberts, you can do that last.
We've talked to her too much.
All right, thank you. I wanted to thank Dr. Azar and Mrs. Chiva for providing our students who stripped the Haiti was canceled due to the travel advisory from the federal government. They provided the students with two days of community service right in our backyard in Worcester. Over the course of the two days, the students volunteered at the Lake Grift, at the Nativity School in Worcester, and at an organization, Magic 25, which is affiliated with Cross, the Bill's Housing, affordable housing for families in Worcester. Students with Dr. Azar's leadership had a really positive two days, bonded, ate some meals together, and came back with a real spirit of collaboration and appreciation. And I wanted to just mention the names of our students who performed this work. Hannah Khan, Connor Crude, Caitlin Elliott, who was representative tonight, who spoke about the school, Molly Kraus, Elizabeth Lemay, Tyra McConner, Erin Daigle, Amelia Ailon, Megan Hollin, Julaine Phillips, and Selena Quarte. The students did a really, really great job. Report cards for return came up this past week, and as Mr. Moore mentioned, they're also in our second M-CAS testing at the middle school. I wanted to give a shout out to the students and adults that were responsible for the PTA-sponsored middle school play, Aladdin. It was a wonderful performance, thoroughly enjoyed it, and they played for nearly four houses for both of their shows. And I also want to wish the very best to Mrs. Soma as she prepares the students in the park program for the upcoming musical by the library, which debuts on May 10th and 11th, and we look forward to their performance. And we thank you for your support of the office. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Strange, do you have anything for us? Nothing left, thank you. That means you get your tally, Mr. Parker.
Thank you very much. Just one other comment, Chris Fornier's report on the students going to the project that Dr. Azar drove of the students in one of our buses and took them all together. It had two cellphone calls to me, we got the hang of it, there was no problems at that point, all the way forward.
I can only express my appreciation for the hundreds of times that those vans have come through for us. One of the best decisions that the district has ever...
That's why the experience with the students has driven them on. Your extensionary report this evening, a couple of quick comments on that, a couple of quick, a couple of line items that are a little bit overtended, okay, well, under consideration, under control, I should say. The positive aspect, I think you still can see a positive balance available, on income refund available at the end, I'm not sure. Two, two items is, one is the teacher's salaries, okay? As was mentioned before, and as we researched and go through it and so forth and so on. This year, we've had, and, I don't know where you...
A lot of babies are coming.
A lot of babies. We had five maternity leaves this year. So that affects this, on a substitute account, that affects the teacher's salaries, okay? We had two, two serious medicals, too, in there, too. So with those, with seven, seven situations, that's why that account is all over where it's at, so we cover that, and we do that all. The other one is building maintenance, which is, as Rich mentioned, too, one of the situations over there is, we had a few other items that we've been working on and so forth. I think probably this year, maybe at a July report or August report, I'll give you a breakdown of everything we spent money on. Okay, for building maintenance, just to give you an idea, you know, where, where our money is going, seeing we're older by that amount, in our maintenance account. But it's all stuff, it's all really for student safety, school safety, that's an issue we fix it, no matter what.
Older buildings need upkeep.
Yeah, exactly, too, because you look at the years and so forth and so on. So that's, on that end of it, that's the extensionary report, that's all I got. He mentioned this building over there, we could be, I'll give you more on that, but we're working on that, we're trying to get them out of it. We hope to get them out of it after, after April vacation, but it's carrying away, carrying a little bit longer, I believe, because of Wednesday, so, sort of, we'll have. Branded floors, branded ceilings, nice painted downstairs area over there, so that's one area. That, all that air, all that stuff would be paid for by insurance, so.
I'm sure Mrs. Bluen would be very appreciative to have our space back. I know she did spend a little crap over there, so thank you for the flexibility of staff over there. It's been very helpful. Love it?
Sure.
I'll try to be brief. We did hold our school choice lottery on April 1st, we had 116 applicants. Our staff is in the process of connecting with some of those applicants to offer them a spot for admission. We're hoping to hear back by the end of April and have firmed up, so that we might take another round of offers, depending on how many people accept, accept our offers. Fifty-eight students applied for seats at Major Edwards, 33 at the middle school, 25 at the high school, so those are pretty good numbers. We have selected our wonderful team for the new teacher summer induction institute, and they're in your packet, we have Susan Cassidy, Melanie Imichetti, Liz Lemay, Allison Janey, and Charlie Swenson. I couldn't be happier, they're just a great, a great bunch of people, and they're going to do a really wonderful job for our new teachers this summer. I also just want to say again a thank you to John and Karen for coming out tonight and doing the NSDEC presentation. And I do want you to take a peek on the last page of our report here at the sidewalk project. Town Administrator Nancy Lucio and I met with the sidewalk planning vendor last week to just go over the plans for the proposed sidewalk. So what you're seeing in that photo is just the part of the sidewalk that comes in front of the school and connects to the sidewalk that's already down here in front of the park. There is a crosswalk where that will cross over and be on the other side of the street heading down towards Pine Garden. So this is an extensive sidewalk renovation. The only thing that Chris Fornier and I asked the vendor to look at is the, the third red sidewalk from the right. We are concerned about the line of sight of that right side of that sidewalk for people turning left into the parking lot. So we just asked for them to make sure that the elevation provides for enough line of sight. We asked them to check that through the West Boston School East to park them off, so. Say we're following up on that, but the rest of it's just going to be a great improvement, and it's going to be done over April vacation. Yeah, I know, right around the corner, you got a nice new sidewalk out there.
Taking down all those...
Yes, they're taking down those trees, yes, yeah, yeah.
Excellent.
Yep, so we're very pleased with that. It's a great, great project for us, and we're happy the town, she, yeah. That's all I have for you.
School report, Mr. Pontesani, anything for me tonight?
Nothing left to talk.
Mr. Morrissey?
I'm just really pleased that the, that the kids that were supposed to go on the heat trip had some alternate service available in, you know, what must have been a disappointing situation after fundraising and planning and all the associated work that goes into the trip. Just, you know, if nothing else, the emotional work that goes into that. I'm just, I'm pleased they had an opportunity to express themselves in an alternate way, and are to be commended for that, as well as the administrators involved. I'm also really pleased that our three young ladies that we met tonight are interested in the STEM disciplines, that, from, from Major Edwards right up through the high school, that's, shows a real commitment and a real solid practice, strength of our school department, so I'm pleased with that, too. That's my, that's my two cents.
I just want to, really quickly, I don't know if everybody knows, Mr. Morrissey's running the marathon on Monday. Weather doesn't look all that great.
It doesn't.
I wish you good luck.
It's better than being hot. Hopefully it won't.
Won't finish last. With that, motion to adjourn, if anyone?
Make a motion to adjourn?
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.